Can you hear us, Paul? I'm doing the test, test, one, two, three. Test, one, two, three. Test, one, two, three. Yeah, so it's working. People that think you're jamming, listening to music.
Yeah, well. Okay, it's five o'clock, time to start the work session on investment allocation. And before we get started, I will mention that my ears are in for warranty work. And so it's really imperative tonight that you do speak into the microphone so I can hear. You don't know how much you miss your hearing aids until you don't have them and you can't hear anything that's going on. So we'll move right along, we'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this evening, as you can see, Bill Lehrman is here before you to talk about the investments. And I know that in the past, there has been a request by administration for some modeling. And then he would report on that when he came here. There hasn't been any extensive modeling done during this timeframe. Keeping in mind about the field house and the million dollars still in CDS. And we're not quite sure how that's going to come out, although there might be a vote on that on Friday. So we might know more on Friday. But once we know, and if there is a need to draw a million from our investments, then we'll have the modeling done and a report for you at that timeframe. So with that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. A lot of the slides that, good to be in front of you, first of all. And this time I didn't have to drive, I ended up flying. Usually, last two times I was in front of you guys, there was a snowstorm. So both times, so it's kind of nice to be down here in great weather. Most of the slides that you guys have, that's in this packet, you guys have seen before. So as always, as I work through this packet, if there's any questions, please stop me and let's tackle those questions as I work through this. Today, I just want to go through kind of where the portfolio is at, kind of go through the quarterly packet that you guys see. And then at the end, look at a couple of projections on what our 10-year projections on the current allocation is going to be. So with that, on slide one. One difference this year is in the short account. And we manage three accounts or four accounts for the city, but three when it comes to the operating side. One is the short account, medium account, and a long-term account. The short account is 100% bonds. Currently, that market value is only $15,000. So that account's been drawn down as money's been taken out of the portfolio. The medium-term account, that's 100% bonds. Those are securities anywhere from one to five years. So the longest dated maturity is five years. There are, there is some corporate bonds in there, and that currently is at 7.2 million. And the long-term account started with 8 million and today, January 31st, there's 11.8 million. So total, these three portfolios have 19.1 million. When we started the bucketing aspect of this, it was 19.4 million. And there was contributions of about a million dollars. And there's been withdrawals of six and a half million. So for the most part, the portfolio market value stayed stagnant, 19.1 million. And you guys have been able to take out six and a half million withdrawals out of this, these portfolios. The short-term account, since May 2015, and why that date's important, that's when we bucketed out into this new strategy. The annualized return has been 2%. The medium-term account has been 1.23%, and the long-term account has been 5.39%. And I just kind of, to look back and look through, and we started with you, started this partnership back in 2013 between Alaska Permanent Capital and the city. All the funds that we were managing at the time, we're just in that short-term account. Just kind of give a recap. We worked with the city during that time and work sessions with the council and started doing. We proposed a new strategy, bucketing strategy, where we separated the funds. There was about 26.5 million in funds, then there was a withdraw. So right about 20, a little over 20 million in funds that we split up into the three accounts, into the short, medium, and long-term. And now we're, as you can see, the long-term account's a little bit bigger of the portions of the three accounts. And because of that, I want to just speak to the equity exposure in the account. When we started in May, we built the allocation to have about 23% equity exposure when we combined all three accounts. And then over time, when we moved into February, that equity exposure moved to 31%. And today, it's at 34%. When we were in front of you last year, I gave some projections and talked to you guys about that equity exposure and the upside and the downside. And I do have those slides in here in a little bit, what it looks like with this current allocation. But that risk exposure, where you guys are okay with the ups and downs of the market with that kind of risk. And obviously, we went through COVID, which was a very downside market. And you guys did a tremendous job of just staying the course and allowing things to recoup. And you guys have benefited from that. But the experience that I took working with you guys during that time was you guys were okay with that volatility in the portfolio at the 31% equity exposure. So leading into this year, only being at 34%, there wasn't a real large recommendation on APCM's side to sell equity and drop in exposure. Yeah, I feel that you guys are okay with that risk with all things equal. I will later in the presentation, and I'll say it here to preface it, that if you guys take, there's another million dollars out of here, out of this, I think it's going to be status quo. Our recommendation and from a resolution that you guys passed was take 500,000 out of the medium-term account, 500,000 out of the long-term account. Now, if there's an additional monies that are coming out of this portfolio, I would recommend APCM getting back in front of you guys and doing another, more of a deep dive into the equity allocation and not have that equity allocation be higher. And you know, into the 37, 38, 39% of your overall pool. So I'll get into that here in a second, or here. When we think about the strategy that was built, there's a trade-off. You know, budget stability versus asset growth. We can have 100% equity in your portfolio, and that will give us the most asset growth, for sure, over a long period of time. We're taking more risk, so we expect it to return more. However, the budget stability is not as much. And when we, when we think about a percentage, a distribution percentage, being able to take the same amount, we would want to have little less equity, not have such as much volatility, because we don't know if those are going to be sustained returns over time. So there's this trade-off between asset growth and budget stability. And that's the thing that we're trying to maintain, is you guys have been taking, you know, close to a million dollars out of this account. But if we have too much equity and we have some down years, that could put pressure on that million dollars withdrawal to maintain the corpus of the fund. As I mentioned earlier, since this new bucketing strategy, you guys have been able to take about six and a half million dollars out and still maintain the normal market value in the portfolios. When we, the revenue of this fund, when we combine them all, and we, the approximate revenue is the sum of administration fees, management fees, interest and dividends, and then changes in market value. So this takes into consideration unrealized losses in the equity markets within this portfolio. And all I did here was we just laid it out from fiscal year, and what does that look like year to year? And at the beginning, in 16, 17, 18, it was about $500,000. And then fiscal year ending 2019 and 2020, we're kind of getting up close to a million dollars. And then as we came out of COVID, in the fiscal year ending 2021, we had a big pop of 2.2 million dollars. And then, in fiscal year 2022, interest rates started moving up. As interest rates moved up, bond prices fall, so we're going to have unrealized losses in our bond portfolio. And then we also had some weaker equity markets. And then that was where we had the negative 1.6 million in revenue generated in the portfolios. And then as of this most recent fiscal year, and we had 780. So when we kind of look at completely, and we sum up from the beginning of the strategy, we're averaging about 567,000 in revenue that this portfolio is generating. And if we think about, if that's what we're generating in unrealized losses, interest and dividends minus our expenses, then to maintain the corpus of the fund, that which should be, was what should be drawn out. So if we start moving into a million, million and a half dollars, then we would expect that we're not going to be able to generate with this allocation that, to generate enough to maintain the corpus or the market value of the portfolio as it is now. One thing to lead in the bottom left-hand corner, this is just of the medium-term portfolio. As interest rates moved up, the bonds have been reinvested at higher yields. So that portfolio, just in the medium-term portfolio, is generating more annual coupon income. So when we think about at the mid-2021, the portfolio on an annualized basis was generating 95, approximately about 95,000 coupon income. As interest rates have reset and we're at much higher, that we would expect coupon income, cash income, just on the medium-term account, assuming that it stays within, the portfolio doesn't drop in market value, about $180,000 just in that one account. So interest rates, even though as interest rates rise, we had unrealized losses. However, the good thing, the benefit of interest rates climbing is if you save the money, we're going to be generating more income off that portfolio. I will pause there and take any questions before I go into the quarterly packet.
Thank you. So right now, we're sitting at about 34% equity exposure. My question would be, based on your experience with working with other municipalities and other large entities in the state, what would be considered a typical equity exposure?
You guys are unique, where these funds are lying at, it's not a true permanent fund, per se. It's not, they're still operating funds. So this is within the operating portfolio, this is more on the riskier side than what we see. Now, if we were looking at it from a permanent fund and it was stripped away, this would be in the middle of the ballpark of risk. Got it, thank you.
Any other questions? Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. So you mentioned in response to Jordan's question that we're riskier than others? And maybe you'll address this later, is there something you think we need to do so that we're not as risky? Or are you comfortable with where we're currently at?
Very good question. I'm comfortable where you guys are at, within the confines of this. If the portfolio was $10 million, then I would say probably start de-risking, take equity off. But when we look at the portfolio as a whole and for a long period of time, and if we can go back to, let me, let me fast forward to you guys to page eight. And we look at the top right-hand corner, there was that four and a half million draw in the short, in the account back in 2014. But between 2014 and 2018, there wasn't any draws on the portfolio. So as this strategy was unfolded and we worked with, with staff and the council at that time, they weren't expecting to take a lot of draws out. So we would expect that we could add risk to the portfolio during this time, because the draws weren't going to exceed a certain value. But as we've kind of moved through 2018 and moving into 2013, the draws are being more consistent, are right around a million dollars a year. And most, so with that said, if you guys were continuing to draw or if there was a significant funding need that you guys need of two and a half, three million being pulled out of this, at that time, I would come back to you guys and say, we should probably look at, looking down 10 years, what are the needs of these funds? How much liquidity do you guys need over the next couple of years? And then really dive into that analysis. And then I probably, I would say de-risk at that time.
If I might follow up. So it's, it's interesting to look at the chart on page eight. As we look at the amount that we've taken out of the accounts, we've been able to actually rebound and keep our balance about the same, even though we've been taking money from these accounts. I see, I see that as a positive.
Yep. And I think it was, it's a credit to the council to move into this direction back in May of 2015. If this strategy wasn't adopted, you wouldn't have the same outcome. And my, back of this is, I don't want to put numbers, but think about this portfolio being probably five and a half, six million dollars less, because we were at such low interest rates for so long that it wasn't generating a whole lot of money, coupon income. So we, in that one page, you know, just in the medium term, was only generating 90,000. So if you're taking a million out, you can kind of see where that would be going. But so the equity exposure has definitely helped you guys.
Follow-up if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Chilton.
Thank you. So looking at a short-term account, we've pretty much spent that down. Would you recommend that we consider shifting funds from the medium or long-term account to rebuild that short-term account? And then the follow-up to that would be, if we, if we should look seriously at rebuilding that short-term account, would it be worth considering restructuring that where it's not fully based on bonds, but maybe looking at high-yield savings and maybe playing the market? I shouldn't say playing the market, but shifting depending on where we are in the market over the long-term. And you know, right now, it's a great time to be invested in short-term savings. And then when that starts diminishing and then things pick back up, maybe shift back to bonds.
I think you don't necessarily need to move to, build up the short-term account. Two reasons off the top of my mind, and then I'll get into the market reason. One, there's, whenever there is, staff needs funds out of there, they can transfer at any account and move over. The one thing, if you look at slide seven, at the end of December, you had, the city had approximately 1.7 million in AMLP, which is Alaska Municipal League Investment Pool. Think of that as a money market fund with credit, you know, it's a prime money market fund. And then also your checking account. So most of your operations, and I'm going to lean to Melanie if I speak out of turn on this, so. But that is your first line of liquidity. If that is dropping and Melanie comes back to me and says, hey, Bill, our liquidity is getting less and less, we need to do something, then that's when we would allocate funds and we'd come back and say, hey, we need to build up that short-term fund to reallocate to that operations. And I'll let Melanie speak here before I get into the market side of it.
So one of the benefits of having money in the short-term account is that we don't need council authorization to be able to spend, which is why when we set up the bucketing strategy, we left an amount in short-term, then we invested things we didn't need right away in the medium-term and long-term. And over time, we've depleted that short-term as we've needed cash for things. And you may recall that two previous times, we've come to council and said, we need, we need money, we need extra money. So for whatever we were doing at the time, once was a few, probably four years ago, we asked for a million dollars. We moved that money from, I think it was the medium-term account into the short-term account right away after the council meeting. And then we didn't end up, and then we didn't end up needing it right away. So it sat in that short-term account, not earning as much money as it could have if we had left it for longer. So you may recall in 2020, I think it was 2021, we came back to the council and needed $2 million. We were in the process of doing some work at the sports center. We knew we were going to need cash for that, and we knew we had debt service payments coming up and other needs. And so we asked for 2 million at that time. Well, instead of moving the money right then, we waited, we had the council authorization. So we knew we wouldn't have to spend the time coming back to get that authorization. But we left the money in the long-term account and medium-term account for longer. Since that authorization, we've only spent 1 million of the 2 million dollars. So there's still a million-dollar authorization hanging out there that we would be able to transfer over if we needed to, which would save us time if we needed cash, we wouldn't have to spend the time coming back to council again for that. So I mean, the big reason, I think, for moving it over to the short-term is just easier access if we needed money. And it's all about timing. It's when we receive money from the borough for tax payments versus when contractor payments come due and we need to pay them. So it's kind of a juggling act. And so I think right now, we're good, we have that million-dollar authorization out there. And if and when we need it, we can, we can move it over. And that's what he was talking about, the previous authorization that I think we said 50% out of medium-term, 50% out of long-term. So we would move it at the time we needed it.
Perfect. As long as you have a sufficient buffer in there to cover municipal operations, I'm fully supportive of leaving the majority of those funds in the medium and long-term. Just might as well make as much money off those as we can while we can.
Yes, and that's kind of what our thoughts were too.
Thank you.
And then the market side of the viewpoint of that is, when we look at a checking account or a money market fund, it might be earning 5, 5, 510 or something to that nature. When we look at the medium-term account, it'll be slightly underneath that. However, with the medium-term account where interest rates, we're going to see the reverse of what just happened with unrealized losses as yields rose, we had bond prices fall, because there's an inverse relationship. But we're getting into a market environment where we're late cycle in the, with interest rates. So as the Fed reverses its policy and starts dropping interest rates, we'll see bond prices actually rise and a total return of that medium-term account should be greater than a cash account. Thank you.
Anything else?
I will. Let me work to, let me, let me go, just go to page nine. I kind of spoke to all this already. Well, let me, let's go to page eight real quick, if you don't mind, and kind of going back to Councilman Chilton's, and we'll just look at portfolio liquidity between when we combine these portfolios. Even in the medium-term account, the long-term account, there's 1.1 million in less than a year. There's 4.6 million in securities maturing one to three years, 4 million in three to five, and so on. So there's plenty of liquidity in both these accounts if there's a need to raise money right away, even though that they're extended out a little bit. Performance of the counts, the medium-term, since inception, as return of 1.19% versus 1.08%. Quarter-to-date, they're in the fourth quarter of 2023, slightly under performance benchmark 3.08 versus 3.19. And then when we move over to the long-term account, since inception, a 5.47% versus a 5.59%, we were underweight equity during a couple of periods that equities did really well. That was the reason for the end of performance since inception. And quarter-to-date, had a strong fourth quarter, calendar year, fourth quarter in 2023 of 8.15% versus a benchmark of 8.24%. With that, you know, kind of look at, you know, from quarter to quarter, the portfolio did very well with the medium-term. If we think of the medium-term, having that 3% total return, and the long-term having a little over 8%, very strong returns from a total rate of return perspective. In the next page, just from an unrealized gains-loss perspective, because the portfolio's been invested since 2015. When we look at unrealized losses, and I'm looking at the right-hand column, the fixed income has a total unrealized losses of 420,000, but it is, and we expect those to reverse as bonds mature to par. And then also from an equity, when we think about the equities of the 8.3 million market value of the equity portion of it, we bought the securities, you know, which totaled about 6.4 million, so there's about 1.9 million in unrealized gains in the equity portion of that. From a quarterly standpoint, this is the quarterly packet. And that revenue number, I just kind of want to walk you guys through the revenue number in the bottom right-hand corner of that 848,000. And I think, you know, every quarter, this is in your guys' packet, you should kind of see, we have the market values. Beginning of the fiscal year, up at the top line, we have our withdrawals, or any withdrawals that come out of this portfolio. The expenses principal, that's the custodian fees, the entity that holds your guys' securities. Our fees, APCM fees, any interest and dividends, that's a positive. Many changes in market value here, they're all realized gains, and then the market value. So as of December 31st, there was, you know, we started the fiscal year with 20.1 million dollars. The market value as of December was 19.1 million. And the approximate revenue within this portfolio was 848,000 for this fiscal year. And when we combine that with, from slide five, on average, you know, since inception, which includes the two swing years, 567, so we're above average on our revenue. These portfolios are generating this year. January was a good month, so far in February, a little bit weaker here in this, this month of February. But I would, I would expect to stay positive throughout this fiscal year. I'll just make one note on the, on the trust fund. The total market value of that trust fund. Um, the uh, total market value of that trust fund, um, as of December is two point three million. At the beginning of the uh, fiscal year, it was two point two million. But when we kind of look back at where that fund started at, at the beginning of May, um, even with all the withdrawals that come out of this account, the uh, it was, it was seeded with one point six seven million dollar deposit, it's at two point three million dollars. So definitely some growth in there. Uh, again, a positive um, uh, outcome of the strategy of the council to move this trust fund instead of being in real short-dated uh, fixed income securities to add equity and look at it more of a permanent fund style, um, perpetual fund. This, this fund was very, set up very similar to the uh, long-term account, so the performance is going to be very similar. And we can see that up in the uh, top left-hand corner, uh, quarter-to-date, um, uh, eight, eight point one two versus the benchmark of eight point two four. And since inception, very similar to the long account because the allocations are very similar, uh, five point three eight versus a five point six three. The trust fund in um, the long-term account outperformed the trust account. And the reason why is in the uh, long-term account, we have corporate uh, bonds, uh, more corporate exposure in that account than the trust fund. I'll pause there for any questions before I kind of walk through a quick strategic review or allocation.
Mr. Carrer.
Sort of a joke. Uh, is tomorrow a special day for you guys? Having one extra day in the year?
Um.
Yes, it is. I just wondered if you guys have any special notice or for what that one day is at one.
Uh, leap year. Um, a lot of securities actually don't um, get uh, interest on a leap year.
On the day. Really?
Yeah.
Of course, obviously, it's really, you wouldn't say it.
Yeah, the, the corporate bonds are thirty by three sixty, so it's just an odd day. And just, so it's a little goofy, but markets are open, everything will work just fine.
Thank you.
Question if I may, Mr. Mayor. Can I get a refresher on what we're using the trust fund for? I vaguely recall we had a special fund set aside. Honestly, it was uh, funded by the Chikantskis for like a scholarship that we administer, uh, we administer as a city. Is this it? Because this seems like a very large amount of money for scholarships.
It was originally funded with, uh, the bulk of it is from the May Chitansky um, Scholarship Fund. Um, and then we also have some library, like small library scholarship fund that was left to the city. I, I'm not sure who it was left by, but um, we have documentation on it somewhere. Um, and I think that that started out at maybe fifty thousand. Um, and then more recently, we had the Dr. Nels Anderson um, contribution for the Dr. Nels Anderson Scholarship Fund also, and I think that was a hundred thousand. So the, the bulk of it is May Chitansky.
Got it. Um, do you know approximately how much money we're distributing between those different programs and scholarships annually?
It's three percent of the balance on the account at June thirtieth.
Got it.
For the next year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'll move to uh, slide seventeen and, and Melanie, I just want to, you know, just reiterate that, you know, the can, the council passed the resolution. Um, when I was in front of you guys, I did some modeling, what that would look like. And our recommendation was take fifty percent of the next two million coming out of uh, the medium-term and two million out of the long-term. You guys have taken about a million, so five hundred thousand out of each, uh, the medium-term and long-term since that resolution was passed. Um, so we, we still would recommend in that moving forward, that the next million to stay within that allotment. Um, uh, five hundred thousand would come out of the uh, you know, fifty percent would come out of the uh, medium-term and fifty percent would come out of the long-term uh, for the next withdrawal.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Um, question, and this could be for Mrs. Amhao. Um, when we take and we do authorize these withdrawals, um, is there a period of time in which you have to make the withdrawal? Or is it until you're at two million dollars?
Um, well, we've only done it twice. Uh, the first time we, we've only done it twice. The first time we moved the money right away um, into the short-term account because we can spend out of the short-term account as we need. Um, the second authorization actually came in, in June of twenty-one, and we didn't start spending any of that until two thousand twenty-three, June of twenty twenty-three. Um, and so we didn't transfer anything over in, into the short-term. Well, we transferred it directly into our AMLP account. But it came fifty percent out of medium-term, fifty percent out of the long-term account. So we still have that one million dollar authorization left. Um, I don't think there's an expiration date on it. We haven't treated it as such. Um, but like I said, we've only done this twice. And we did it different both times. So um, yeah. So the one million dollars um, that we did spend out of that authorization was part of that one point eight million you, that he talked about that came out of, out of our investments this, this year, this fiscal year.
Go ahead.
Um, and Melanie and I talked about that. And the reason why, in our minds, it's still allowed or there's a specific timeframe because it's an adopted resolution. And there wasn't a specific timeframe put in the resolution. So for us, it's still a, a resolution adopted by council that we're, you know, using as our basis.
Anything else? Okay.
I'll just, just, there's, uh, let me go over two more uh, slides if you don't mind, and, and we're on slide eighteen here. Um, what we did here, and I did want to kind of model this out and, you know, your current allocation. Um, when we think about sustainability, going back to budget stability and asset growth. And we, what we did here was we modeled and looked at ten years forward based off of our projections of the uh, different asset classes in the markets. And um, over time, we believe that this portfolio, um, will return about five point seven percent um, in annual return. And if we think about um, taking inflation out of that, two and a half percent inflation, and we look at three percent is the number that we can take out of that sustainability. So this portfolio can be inflation-proofed, that comes out to be about five hundred and forty-five thousand dollars um, within the current allocation. If we look at it, if we look at the monies, if we took a million dollars just out of the long-term portfolio, so dropping that equity allocation a little bit to get back to the thirty-three percent, um, very similar um, projection would, would happen in that same sustainability of it would be about five hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to be withdrawn, to be inflation-proofed. Um, you guys don't have inflation-proofing mechanisms because it's not a true permanent fund. But that, I, I, I put that in front of you guys just to have in the back of your um, minds when you guys are looking at this portfolio and looking at funding coming out of this uh, account. Pause and through the mayor, any questions?
Right. Any questions?
Um, on uh, slide nineteen, and we, we look at the ten-year horizon and um, if we think about, you know, taking the simulation, then starting with a market value of the nineteen point two, and we immediately withdraw one million dollars out of that. And we, we look at it moving forward over the ten-year years and we, and we modeled zero um, and zero withdrawals moving forward for the next nine years. Um, we would expect uh, fifty percent of the time that the market value of that portfolio would be approximately thirty point nine or thirty-one million dollars or higher. Um, would be the projections that we would have at the low, um, would be twenty-two point three million. So we believe that this portfolio will continue to grow. Uh, we just want to caution that if um, if the, if there's money coming out of this more than one million dollars, and, and I'll finish my remarks here on, on page twenty-one. If there's more than one million dollars coming out of this portfolio, we would, uh, we recommend that APCM get back in front of you guys um, and go through a modeling exercise um, uh, to show the different changes and what the market value would be at in different intervals of different withdrawal patterns.
Any questions?
I'll entertain any questions on the markets or the portfolio or happy.
Don't see anything.
Thank you.
Oh, that's it?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you were going to pull out the crystal ball and tell us the market was going to go thirty, thirty or forty percent next year or so.
I, I mean, I'll just say um, the com, comments on the market. Um, well, I, I, the, the, in twenty twenty-three, the markets have outperformed expectations, the economy has outperformed expectations. Um, when we entered twenty twenty-three, uh, the market was expecting five to six uh, rate cuts here in um, this year. Um, the economy has stayed very, uh, has been very solid. Uh, GDP has been at three percent above. That expectation was, you know, most economists was thinking that was going to get into the one below two percent. The Federal Reserve would have to start cutting rates to stimulate the economy. Um, thus, interest rates moving down. However, throughout uh, twenty twenty-three and here in twenty twenty-four, the economy has been better than uh, expected. The Federal Reserve has held rates where it was. The first rate cut was, was expected here in March, where that's been pushed off to June now. Um, so the economy's been doing really well. So we expect, um, you know, with that, the equity markets have done very well so far here in twenty twenty-four. Um, and we, we expect that to continue for a little longer, a longer time.
Vice Mayor Parker.
Um, thank you, Mayor Whitney. So to summarize, um, our portfolio is doing well. The, the market's doing okay. Don't change anything at this point. And if we're going to take more than a million dollars, bring you back so we can reanalyze where we're at.
Perfect. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Anything else anybody'd like to add? No, if they have no further questions or anything, then we'll uh, call the work session over with and go back to our regular meeting at six P M.